Okay, let's start with the prayer. Any takeers?
Don, would you like to lead the prayer?
Oh.
Is there another Don here?
You look like Moses.
Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. We appreciate the opportunity of living in this beautiful area. We ask that you guide our leaders and help them make good decisions for the entire community. And blessed is meeting, in Jesus' name, amen.
Call is being ordered at 6 o'clock. Roll call.
Counselor Lucero.
Here.
Counselor Padilla.
Here.
Counselor Garcia.
Here.
Counselor Rodarte.
Present.
Mayor Hicks.
Note that Mayor Hicks is not here. Do you join me in the pleasurable lead this place?
I'm pleased to lead it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an approval for the agenda, the last agenda. Have you guys seen anything in there?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
And Counselor Garcia.
Yes, sir.
And apparently we have no citizens to address the council. Okay, we'll start with the discussions here. Item number one, any comments or discussion on the charter? I believe we're in compliance. Need to make any motions there? Now we're good?
This question.
Okay, let's see. Number two, approval of the regular city council minutes for 5/11/2020. Anybody see anything there?
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular city council minutes for 5/11/2020.
And I'll second. Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
And Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Moving forward to lodgers tax funding recommendations.
So we have Scott Gray here from the Lodgers Tax Board that's prepared to answer questions and give you a brief synopsis of the board's recommendation.
Okay, if you go down, do they have the same paper?
Yes.
Is this on? Can you hear me? If you go down to the Grants Rodeo Association, which I think is the first one, their funding request originally was 48.5. They adjusted it down based on the timeline that we have and getting our county back open, and they came up with 31.7. And us just looking at it as a board, we weren't sure still that things in July are going to happen based on the way our county's opening up right now. So we recommended them 27,500. And this being said, we were advised by the city manager to begin with to only give out $250,000 as an estimate for your budget. That doesn't mean throughout the year that it'll change. We may have more later on in the year, but we just don't have that number yet. I think you guys get the reports back from that two months later than when they are actually taken. Do you want to do them individually, or we just go down and do the whole thing? And then if you have questions, ask. You want to ask inside any of these budgets that you see, or you want me to just keep reading them as far as the Mining Museum goes?
Yeah. Keep reading.
Okay. The Mining Museum goes, they requested 85 their award. We dropped $10,000 off of them and went with 75. And then if we drop down to the Chamber, their ask this year was 135. Last year, they received 115. So by looking at this and just the things that have been, you know, I mean, how our county's really not open right now, we dropped their budget to 95. And then coming down to the Cibola Arts Council, we removed their budget by $2,000 to $5,000 from the original seven ask. And then if you come down to the Cibola Historical Society, which is the little history museum out there in Milan, his usual request is 4,500. I don't think he's changed much over the last probably four or five years. And we left him at 3,500 this year. The other Cibola Historical Society History Museum, their request was 42,000, and it was based on them needing a new HVAC unit at the old library building that they're turning into that. So inside of us looking at this as a board, they adjusted the request down because that was based on a bid that they received, and then they went and tried to find a lower bid. And when they came back to the meeting when we awarded, they said, well, we only need 30, and that would probably get us to get this HVAC unit. So we had a little board discussion on that, and the reason why we got it down to $10,000 is we looked at it as sort of a heads in beds thing. I mean, I know that the city now owns that building and has to figure out what you guys want to do with that building. But we went, are we really getting people here to stay the night and get us back lodgers tax by going to the history museum that's not open yet? So we dropped theirs down to the 10 on the idea that if in later in the year we start bringing in more lodgers tax than we estimated, we would have a second ask maybe right before fall, when Laura may have a better gauge of what we're actually bringing in. And then that would be something that if it was a priority to you guys to have that fixed through lodgers tax funding, we would look at funding the rest of it later on in the year. So then coming down to the Winter, Mount Taylor Winter Quadrathlon and the Cibola Trail Alliance, which they're both asked by the same group of people, we kind of feel like during the fall and with the social distancing of like bike riding, we're pretty sure that they're going to have those events by the time we get to fall. So that, you know, and that thought, we're like, we need them to have their funding to advertise because they'll have to start advertising towards the mid to end of summer to get their contestants to come. So we're like, yeah, we're pretty sure that one will probably happen. And moving down to the last request, the American Legion Riders, they had a request of $12,000 inside of that budget, and I don't know if you have it with you. They were trying to buy like a mechanical bull to do their Bikers Bull event. Well, their Bikers Bull event usually takes place in the, I think it's the second to third week in July. It was kind of same time around that the bike rally used to be. But again, we kind of went, it's, you know, was it a two-day event? Is it putting heads in beds? And do we really want to fund a bull? Or are they even going to have this event? And at the time, they were trying to postpone it to do it at a later date. So we adjusted their budget down to $4,000. That total does come out to the $250,000 that Laura recommended.
Okay. Any questions?
Now, Laura, does that reflect like the 30% of overall?
No, so this is a different pot of funding. So we looked at what we brought in, what we've brought in so far. Typically, we bring in about 350,000. We're down about 100,000 at this point. So I allocated about 100,000 less. So we looked at actual dollars coming in rather than the 30% cut. So it is cut by quite a bit. It's down 100,000.
Now, if there's some additional lodgers tax money that comes in, some of these could be changed?
Yes.
Down the road?
Yes, we could do another request and put more money out.
And also, I mean, I don't know if you guys, how you use the funding, like if it doesn't get spent from the previous year, does it go back into that batch for this upcoming year?
So not necessarily because the money that we allocate out is based on projections. So it's not actual money in the bank necessarily. It's what we projected would be coming in to budget out. So if we don't bring in that amount, or if we bring in more, then there's more money available, but it gets carried over if there is money left.
But that'll be the one we were talking about. You wouldn't actually know the full true last quarter figure till like September, right? Because it reports two months after the final month.
We'll know by June 30th because we actually received the money, and they have to pay their lodgers by June 25th, so we'll know by then.
To close out their end of the year physicals too.
Yes.
Any other questions? So are these cuts, are they like a percentage across the board, or is it just based on...?
They're not a percentage, but we cut the allocation by 100,000 based on what we're bringing in. So then the lodgers board looked at the request and decided how much of that 250 they thought each group should be allocated.
And a lot of them, Rick, are based on the timeframe that their events happen. Like, most of these events that happen, happened in the summer months. The Chamber used to have a fall event that they weren't sure they were even going to do this year. But some, most of them were coming up so soon that we're going, how are we going to have that many people in one space right now? It's not going to be open, so we're going, why would we fund that when we don't think it's going to happen? And that's why I went back. If money came available later in the year based on per budgets, they could come and have a second ask for whatever might be in there if it is more than what we are projecting.
So do we need to approve this?
Yes. I've got a question. What about the Grants Main Street, would they do it there?
Well, so they didn't get a packet in on the timeframe. So we went, what can we fund them when they didn't have a packet in under the guidelines to ask for funds? So that's one of those ones where we said, you know, we missed the deadline. If there was something that became available and they had somebody that was ready to do Main Street, they would have to turn around and come ask you for funding instead of us because they would miss the deadline on this.
I don't believe so. I think they have had or have an interim to...
They've got a board or something.
They do have a board of directors.
Do they have like a vice chair or something that could have taken over? I don't know.
Well, she tried to, okay, the lady showed up on the day of our recommendations going, hey, we have a packet. But the deadline for that packet was way earlier than the day that we did the awards. But it, I don't know if it just skipped their mind, they didn't see that it was, it needed to be turned in, or they didn't really have a plan or an event for this year because typically their main event was a geocash event that also fell in July, I believe. So maybe they were looking at it the same way we were, that they didn't think it was going to happen. I don't know. I don't know who dropped the ball there, but they didn't have a packet in.
Well, we are taking a, combining that with something else so we can have some kind of events, you know, like to us taking over or somebody, so we can have some kind of event like 1st of July is coming around the corner. I know we're social distancing, but I don't know if we're going to have a parade or not, but any kind of event, yeah.
Well, the Chamber spoke of the parade, but due to the social distancing rules, they didn't know, they were even almost considering doing a virtual parade. They didn't know how we could do that, and then they went, if we did do a virtual parade, how are we going to stop people from showing up at where we're going to film it? So it was kind of a, I'm not sure they have a plan to do it right now.
So we don't have any concrete advice from the governor not to do a parade, no?
I think today, it sounded like she did a press conference, and from what I heard, she's opening even Cibola County back up as far as restaurants, 25% or, I'm not sure, but there is some opening up coming up right now.
What's the date of that?
For businesses. I'm not sure. It might be immediately, I thought, someone, did you get to see it, Chris?
June 1st.
June 1st.
So it's phase one, isn't it, basically? We're going to a phase one of opening, right?
We're going into some, on a phase one, I think.
Yeah, the rest of the state, aside from McKinley and Cibola and San Juan, where they were in a preliminary stage where others were in the first stage.
Then you'd need the numbers and the distancing for the parade. I mean, I know it's spread out over space, but how do we decide how many people can be on the street, you know, for a parade?
It's late in the game.
I've got another question for you, Laura. Now, this particular item that we're discussing, is it something that we have to address tonight, make a decision on? Or is it something that maybe we could revisit another month down the road and see if there's any adjustments that needs to take place, or...?
Yes, you could table and think about it and come up, you know, with a different proposal or get some more information. You definitely, we have some time, we could do it the first meeting in June.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, time is going by fast, and if we don't make some kind of decision as soon as we can, we're going to lose our, people want to do something. If we, you know, I'm with you, nobody's coming for, if we table this and table that to another meeting, when do we make that decision? You know, because we're going backwards if we don't make a decision, I think.
So that would affect the planning of events if we, let's say, we held it back another month and these organizations, it would affect their planning platform?
It could possibly, I think the only one that has an event coming up right away would be the rodeo association.
Or the Chamber if there was a parade. But in my mind, you go, how much money do they have left now? Because this money is from the start of July 1st, right? The parade actually happens on the 4th. So to me, most of their planning legwork would probably have to be done before the 1st.
Besides, they don't have a director either.
I don't know, I don't know how they use that money inside of their budget, like if they use this for that parade on the 4th, or they use the money from the year before. You know, I don't know. That might be something that you could ask the Chamber Director because I don't, if you do the number, the number they asked for to put on the parade and it didn't have the Fall Chili Fiesta in there, but it was supposed to be in there, are $8,000. And part of that money is the traffic control plan for, from the DOT. When you use Santa Fe and you use First Street, they have to have a traffic control plan, which they have to pay for, and I don't know how long it takes them to get approved, but that has to be done before they even consider doing a parade, from what we were told from the Chamber. Kind of like how the quad puts in for theirs.
My question is for the parade, the Fall Fiesta, does that really bring in heads and beds?
So we're mixed on that. Our board kind of gets a little split on our ideas of heads and beds. And the reason why that board is broken up between hoteliers and business owners and an at-large person is because you kind of also want your city to be well-rounded. Once you get people here, there's more things for them to do than just what, you know, something that keeps them here. That's kind of why we keep looking at like the museum and things that once they hit town, you want to keep them here long enough, and you know you're going to get grocery receipts out of them. If they come and see and visit these things, they'll buy gas, they'll buy food, they'll buy whatever. But we're always, we do look at heads and beds for like main events to try to figure out, who are we getting? But once you have them here, you kind of want to have things to keep them busy to...
But the taxes for the lodger's tax comes from the tax, correct? Not from the grocery receipts tax from the gas station?
No.
So you're giving them money...
Oh, no, we've talked about this in many different ways.
It's just, it's, I understand the grocery receipts tax, and I understand to get people here to grants, but my thing is you're giving them 75, 95,000. What, I mean, it's, the parade is cool locally, it's the best thing, you know, it's a great parade, Fall Fiesta, we're working on it, but at the end of the day, you're giving them money from the lodger's tax to do...
And inside of these two budgets, we had a pretty extensive conversation during our last meeting because all of these organizations, other than the Chamber and the Mining Museum, Chamber and Mining Museum are the only two that have administrative fees in them. So we pay their employees. All the rest of these organizations are all volunteers. They put on these events voluntarily. So I had spoke with Laura at one time of how it used to work when she was at Future Foundations. How did you decide what administrative fees were based on your total budget? It's usually a percentage. So if you went back to, say, the Mining Museum, out of their original $85,000 ask, $40,000 of that budget is administrative fees. So that's, you know, you're just, you're just under 50% of that budget. On the opposite side, the Chamber side, you have your $95,000, and I believe it's like $15,600 administrative fees. So between that 50, what do we have, 55,600, it's split between two employees at the Chamber. That's, I mean, we asked that question to try to find out, you know, what are we, what are we paying for, like what? And yes, they promote the city, they try to keep people here. So we look at their budget based on what they used it for inside of each budget. But that's just how it was laid out. So we go, well, we'll go with the cuts and see if that's an approval, or if you guys want to change it. It's totally up to you.
No, I understand. This is something that we need to work on big time because a lot of this stuff in here, I mean, it's cool, but around Main Street or the Chamber, as far as what the roles that they actually are supposed to be playing, I don't think, I think we've gotten to a point where we're just stagnant now, and we're just, we go with the motions, we give them money, same thing every year in, year in, year out. Other than, I do know the Grants Rodeo Association, we got a grant, I guess, at some point in time to do a covered rodeo thing, which that's going to bring in heads and beds. That's something good for the community. So that's going to be something good, you know, but everything else, you know, it's, I need to, it just doesn't feel right that you're paying so much money to the Chamber, and that's not what they're supposed to be doing. The Chamber's supposed to be local businesses.
Well, that's the other thing. We talked about the advertising and what's useful and what gets them here. So when we came back to the Chamber side of their budget, not the Mining Museum side, inside of that budget, $66,000 of that budget is used for 10 billboards across the I-40.
Raise your hand if you, you recognize the billboards? Does anybody recognize the billboards that you see on highway? Are they faded? Are they good?
They're still there. I've seen a few of them, yeah, they're still there.
And I think, is that to redo the skins every year, or is that just for the rental space?
I think it's for the rental.
I think that they also design, I think the company that leases out the billboards, I'm told that they also do the design for the billboards.
I think we ought to have, I don't know, billboards, something flashing lights, something like that.
Are they lit up at night? You notice it?
Well, I do know the one you have that advertises your drive-through right here on the other side of this building. A lot of people come off the highway to do that. Now, how we can find out if they're seeing it on a billboard or they're seeing it on the internet, I'm not sure how we can figure that out to get those true numbers.
There's one coming into the city on that end that advertises this?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I've seen that.
They used to have one for the golf course. Every year, they come up with, I think, a new theme, right? A new, they have an advertising committee on the Chamber that decides what it is they want to promote for the City of Grants for tourism. And you guys currently have a tourism person working in the city. We used to always ask this question because there used to be three organizations kind of doing the same thing. You had Main Street, you had the Chamber, now you have your own tourism person. So they're all kind of asking for money to do the same thing.
The one item here, the Mount Taylor Winter Quadrathlon, that, that's a very good organization right there, I think. People come in the night before and say the day, did Sunday?
Yeah, that's always a good draw.
Yes.
That, I mean, the events and stuff like that, I guess, I mean, we have to figure out when and how we can have an event like every quarter. First quarter is the quad, second quarter is maybe the geocaching, third and fourth quarters what? Got to figure out something to start to bring more people in. I mean, the Trail Alliance is cool, they're trying, but you know, everything takes baby steps.
Well, the overnight stuff, like I said, when you're looking for two-day events, there's not a lot of them. I mean, you have your quad where you said they come in the night before. Rodeos, typically they'll do one or two-day things. After that, you know, after that, I don't think people, unless they're from here, stay overnight for the 4th of July. I don't think unless they're from here, they stay overnight for the Fall Chili Fiesta. Depending on how you view what you want this lodger's tax to do for you.
Well, I know, whatever's going on, you guys have the recommendations, you have a board. I mean, I make a motion that we approve whatever you decided to give them, but at the end of the day, we're going to start to look into all these little organizations to try to improve grants. That's what we want to do. We don't try to do something different, it's always going to be the same. We haven't grown in 30 years. So as collectively as all these groups and as a team, how can we get better? So the board, the Chamber, the councilmen here, we have to figure out, okay, and ask questions. What's going to better grants? What's the organization is going to step up and what are they going to do? Like you said, we might be doing all three different things. You know, I've seen Chris, and she's done a lot of good things with our websites and this and that. But collectively, we all just got to work together. So at the end of the day, you have a board. There's stuff on here that they have questions, but maybe we not going to fly off the handle right now and say you're going to start cutting everybody, and I don't know the whole story. So I mean, I make a motion to exempt the lodger's tax funding FY 2020-2021.
For 250,000?
For 250,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And for Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
And Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps, you know, these entities can come in like every quarter, you know, or give us maybe a breakdown of what they're working on.
Yeah, I mean, it would be easier to say, okay, you have this organization, hey, we're coming July, we're really working hard by advertising. Give us the good feeling that, hey, you guys are working really hard for the community and this and that. So when they come and you guys ask for money, it's like, hey, man, they, those guys worked pretty hard. You know, these guys worked pretty hard. I'm not saying none of what he does, but we just, transparency and let us be informed on what's going on, it's going to help us to make a better decision when you do come for these, you know, the money.
I agree with you there, Eric. An economic, a quality person, at least once a month, come and give us a report.
That's something we can set up.
We can. We'll have to get the mayor to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
But yes, we can.
Is that something that we need to get involved with Mayor Hicks?
Yes, I think, let him know that would be your wish.
I'm on that board, as is Laura. I'd like a report on that.
Okay, let's move to item four, Grants Flyer and Rescue Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor Portem, and counselors, city manager, staff, and a varied audience here.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief.
Been trying to get to do this since January-ish, and a lot of things have happened between then and now. So I'm very happy to come before you and tell you just a synopsis of what we did in 2019. You all have a nice little printout, and I put mine in a book because it sits in the office because everybody asks me questions all during the year. What'd you do last year? So we remind them. In 2018, we found out that we were under-reporting for whatever reason. So we got schooled by the State Fire Marshal Office on how to do our reports. We have EMS reports and fire reports. So we had 2,706 runs in 2019. A lot of runs, a lot of things that people ask us to do. It's quite unbelievable, but every one of them gets a report generated for them. Couple of the highlights, we bought a new rescue unit, which is a big rescue for, the big red one that sits in Bay 4 to help folks that get trapped in vehicles and what have you, with all the toys we've purchased over time that make it quick and efficient to get those folks out. And in 2019, we ordered a new fire truck, and it didn't come in in 2019. Came in in 2020 in January, and that's the engine six that you see parked sometimes out here in Station 2 to help with our ISO rating for the city itself. Just, just barely, just a synopsis here, we lost 58 firefighters last year. We lost fifty-eight firefighters last year, for one reason or another. Uh, heart attacks, accidents, training, what have you. And sorry to say that to date, we've lost twelve firefighters to COVID-nineteen, on top of all those others that we've lost. So that, that in itself is something we'll reflect at the end of the year, because those folks just went to work just like anybody else, and contracted a virus, and they're no longer with us. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Um, I know that, that the, the report is electronic, you also have a paper one, hopefully, but, uh, it's got a lot of information with regards to what, what your fire department does. So, happy to field any questions you'd like.
Any questions, guys?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to give you some feedback. You know, a lot, a lot of times I hear the fire department, you know, if someone in the, in the, in the community says, oh, you know, the fire department helped me, so at the end of the day, it's always positive. It's always, these guys are treating us with respect, they're fast, they're handy, and you guys, you guys are heroes. So I just want to say thank you, to all you and your whole staff.
We appreciate that. I, I, I reflect the same sentiment. The, uh, the twelve to fifteen folks that I have, depending on the day, are all heroes when it comes to what needs to get done. Recently, we've had a downturn in EMS calls, but an upturn in fire calls. I don't know what's going on, all kinds of things are burning out in, out in the, out in the community. It's just everywhere. It's not vehicles, it's grass, it's sheds, it's houses. I have no idea what's going on. Trying to educate some of our folks with regards to, uh, fire starting programs and, and, and fire education, and I don't know what is going on. But we'll be out there, you know. It's just, uh, it's never a dull moment, let's put it that way.
Chief, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you, um, are you fully staffed? Got all the, all the?
Yes, I have nine, uh, nine commissioned firefighters, yes, I do.
I want to kind of echo what, uh, Counselor Eric says. Uh, your firemen are very, very professional when they do their job, very professional. They, they're very courteous with the public, and it's a good testament to, to the fire department. Thank you.
Drill that into them every time we have staff meetings, or I see them, and I literally drill that into them, as, you know, you're not here for you, you're here for your community, period. That's, that's why you're here.
Yeah, I've met a few of your, your guys and your crew, so, uh, they're, they're very good at what they do, and again, tell them all thanks for what they do.
Likewise, Robert. Uh, I know most of those guys. And, uh, like last weekend, holiday, here, I'm going to my daughter's house, the, the guys working, delivering their families. You know, I know that's part of the job, but I want to thank them, and you as well.
I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll echo your sentiments exactly.
I'd like to point out that the firefighters really use their off-time very productively, and they do a lot around the station. If you are around here, you'll see they're always cleaning and fixing things. They remodeled the inside of the, the fire department over here, and redid the floors and the counters themselves, and I believe they're very proud, but it saved the city a lot of money, and was good use of time. And so I see that quite frequently, where they're being very productive during the downtime. And one thing I wanted to point out that I learned when I came on, I always heard the complaint from my dad, why do so many, uh, why do so many vehicles have to go to a call? You know, there's the ambulance, the fire truck, a police car. And so that was my question when I came on, but I've learned that many times the calls that they get are not what people say they are. So they might say, well, we have an elderly lady that fell down, and when the firefighters get there, they may find that it's a domestic violence situation, where grandma got thrown out of the car, or, you know, they need police assistance, or somebody has a knife, and it's not always safe. So, um, it's important that they have backup with them when they go to a call. It's not always what comes across on dispatch, so.
Some days, it's, like I said, it's a never, never-ending challenge when we, when we go to any call, and we protect the police officers, and they do as well to us. So, it's a team effort every time we go to a call, because right now, I'm listening to three calls simultaneously going on in town. And they may sit and do things at the station, but you never know. We've got three calls running simultaneous as we're, as we're standing here. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, next, Resolution twenty-sixteen-seventy-eight, budget adjustment request.
Good evening, Council. Um, this is a budget adjustment request, so, um, this one, I think I've learned everything I need to know for DFA, they throw something else at me. And we have to, um, not only present a resolution when we go over budget for expenditures, but we also have to present a resolution when we go over budget for revenue. And so this is just real simple. Our, our budget, uh, we budgeted eighty-five hundred dollars for, um, the EMS fund, emergency medical services, for this year, fiscal year twenty, and we got eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. So this is simply a resolution saying that the revenue is increased from eighty-five hundred to eighty-eight-twenty-four.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion for the approval?
Let me ask you a quick question, okay?
Yes, sir.
You said you asked for eighty-five hundred, and you got eighty-eight? Is that what you're saying?
We budgeted eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five.
Um, actually, Chief probably left. So, um, the EMS comes under the fire, not under, but Chief is also in charge of that, so they project, we project what we're going to get this next year, and we projected too low. It was, it was eighty-eight-twenty-four, and we projected we were going to get eighty-five hundred, because we're not, we don't really know until after the budget's already submitted, what the exact number is. Um, it'll be the same thing with the fire protection fund. Um, he's projecting what we're going to have this next year, but we don't get that information until after the budget's finalized.
So is this a good thing?
Oh, it is a good thing, yeah. It's three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars extra. Yeah, it is a good thing. It is a good thing. Yes. Anytime we get extra money, it's a good thing.
I think we can afford that, right?
Right.
Well, if it's three dollars or three hundred.
That's right. That's right. So, thank you, Kim. So I just need your approval on this, please.
Do you make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty-dash-one-six-seven-eight.
Good. I'll second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Pelle?
Yes.
And Counselor Gartan?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. Thank you, Kim. See, next item, Second Street Canal Pedestrian Bridge. I understand that
We have problems.
We have problems with this bid, due to the over-budget, or over-bid, uh, by a few dollars, so.
And we have Donnie here with Wilson and Company, that will go over the bid with you.
Good evening, good evening, councilors, Ms. Manager. Yeah, so we opened bids, um, two days ago on Tuesday. And we had four bids, chemo, constructors, TLC, plumbing and utility, Compass, and, um, engineering and construction, and Vital Consulting Group. And, and, and as you mentioned, the, the bids did, did come in high. Um, our engineers estimate, um, I'm just going to read the, the, we, we had a bid alternative.
Hand it up.
Um, oh. Sorry about that.
Yeah, Donald, I thought you were snacking, no, buddy.
I, I held on to all the, uh, to, to all the handouts.
Thank you.
So, you'll see on there that, um, uh, our engineers estimate on the far right, uh, the base bid plus add-all, uh, with New Mexico grocery receipts tax, our engineers estimate was two-seventy-three, and the bids came in, the, the lowest was, uh, was four-hundred-and-forty. Um, we looked, basically, all the, all the items came out higher, um, because we, we were hoping and thinking that both of these projects, Washington and, and the Second Street Pet Bridge, we'd get good costs for, you know, contract, one contractor getting both jobs. That basically didn't turn out to be the case, um, on this one. But, what, uh, what the letter of recommendation says is, is to, uh, to reject all bids, that's, that's what Wilson is recommending, to reject all bids. And what we want to do is make some adjustments, uh, and we'll, we'll do whatever it takes to, to get within budget, um, even if, we, we have a monument sign for, um, you know, that we, that we wanted to include with the project. Um, and, and the bid was about thirty-nine thousand for the monument sign, so, you know, there's, maybe we take the monument sign out. There's some other items in there that I, I've already looked at, or, you know, we can make a design adjustment and save probably fifty grand, just from what I've looked at. But we still need more, so there's some work that Wilson can do to, to, um, to help lower the cost, and then the, the plan would be to then go through a CES contract and get it. We could get it administered, uh, pretty quickly, um, um, you know, after making a few adjustments, um, uh, to get the project built.
Wasn't this, this bridge supposed to be prefabbed, like, now, Kirk, and then how, and then?
Yes, it's, it's a prefabbed, uh, truss structure bridge.
Is that what these guys are going to do?
Uh, yeah, and that, and that's what the bid, and, and that's another thing that came in higher than, than what we anticipated, was the steel structure bridge. Um, but, you know, we still want to have that, that steel structure, so we want to make some other adjustments to the design to, to make it work. But yes, it's going to be a, a, a bridge, not a box covert like the other entrances to the school. Uh, this will be a bridge, a pedestrian bridge, so it'll have abutments and a nice steel bridge crossing.
And then you, comparing your, your estimate to theirs, what, anything, any shady things? Any out of the ordinary?
Uh, almost all the items were above our estimate, and I, and I, uh, you know, our estimate was, was built thinking that we would get some savings, because we bid both of the projects at the same time. But just all the costs were, were higher than, uh, you know, so basically the contractors, it doesn't look like they, they bid the, both, both projects as if they would win them both, if that makes sense. And, and the pedestrian bridge is a smaller project, so economies of scale, your, your unit costs for everything is going to be a little higher, and so, I mean, but that's, that's what I noticed looking at the, the big tab, is basically all the items are, are higher than what, uh, than what we anticipated. And, uh, uh, but, I, you know, like I said, I think there's, there's a few items in there we can, uh, uh, eliminate, like, we had a, we were, we were building some of the concrete-lined channel, um, and doing some grading, and, and with that, we needed, we needed to de-water. And so those are a couple of the items that we can eliminate, and that's what I was saying, maybe about, about fifty thousand dollars if we don't worry about the de-watering. Um, the bridge of, the, the abutments are going to be above the water table, so we don't, we don't necessarily have to do that. So if we just eliminate the grading of the channel down below, we don't have to touch the groundwater. And so there's, there's adjustments like that that we could do, um, to, to rebid it and make it work.
And that's a process of thirty days, sixty days, what is it?
Um, I, I'd say we can, because the CES process, I mean, you can, we can give them a week to, to, to put a bid together, um, you know, may, uh, and, and then to get the, the design, you know, I'd say thirty days, we can get it done, we can get it back out, and, um, and, and probably have bids, yeah, in, in a month. I'd say, we, we, that's something that we'll, we will definitely shoot for, is to get it, get it out, and award it, um, in a month, so that we'll have a contractor on board.
Okay, so we're looking at, at least a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, right, for the lowest bid?
Uh, it was about a hundred-and-fifty.
Around there, right?
About a hundred-and-fifty, um, and so.
Is that what we're looking, as far as cutting? Is that what you're saying?
Um, I, I think, um, you know, we'll, we'll aim for that number, about a hundred-and-fifty. I, uh, and if we, like I said, if we remove the monument sign and, and do some of these other adjustments, I, you know, I, we can get pretty close. And we'll definitely run ideas by Don and, 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 and others to make sure, uh, you guys are good with the adjustments that we, that we make. But, but in the end, we want to have a bridge there. We, we actually added some colored, uh, concrete, uh, patterned concrete, uh, for, for the bridge itself. Maybe we just go with, uh, gray concrete. That, that was actually really a lot more expensive than, than what I was thinking. And, uh, you know, adjustments like that, but we'll still have abutments and a, and a bridge crossing there.
Yeah, they're well over your, your estimate. That's, that's quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
I could say it was pretty close, but it looks like none of these guys, these companies, not the business.
It was, it, it was surprising to see these bids, actually. And, um, yeah, I mean, I, I, um, you know, if, if we, um, you know, cancel the bids or, or reject all bids, we can talk to the contractors and, and, and get ideas, you know. If, if we do reject the bids, then we can, then we can ask, um, you know, what their thoughts are, why these bids were high.
Does it go out for bid again?
Um, what, what our, what Wilson is suggesting is to go out to CES bids, so we can, we, uh, we control, we, we can pick a few contractors. Preferably, you know, like, AUI is already out here.
Now, that's a different direction, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's still, it's still sending it out for bid. We're giving the contractors a bid form, it's just a different procurement process, um, through CES. You don't have to, uh, advertise and, uh, and bid it for as long. Um, CES, you can go directly to the contractor and say, hey, uh, can we get a, a bid on this project? And, and do that for, say, three contractors, and, and, and see what comes back.
And like you say, AUI is over here.
A, AUI.
You could, you could save some money with mobilization.
Correct, that, that would be the hope. And then, um, Compass, uh, on, for the next side of Washington, Compass was a little there, so, you know, it makes sense to, and then, someone's out in Milan doing some work. Uh, but, but we'll get contractors that, that work here locally.
Walter McBride.
And, uh, and, you know, that are already here, so to save on those mobilization costs.
They're charging, uh, mobilization, they're charging twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, the, the mobilization was, yeah, for, if you're, if you're working on both jobs, that, that mobilization number is, is really high.
I'd like to ask Donald a question. Donald?
Yo. Counselor.
Now, we, we reject this right tonight, okay, then, uh, then you go a whole different direction in order to see if we can procure the, the correct, uh, the correct, what we need, two-hundred-and-seventy-three, to do what it is that we want to do, right?
Yeah. The funding agreements are about two-ninety. We've already awarded construction management for thirty-five, something like that, so subtract that. So we only have about two-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand available for construction, per the funding agreements. Now, there are times they go over and the city is, uh, has enough in the general fund to where we'll make up the difference, but given the situation that we're in, we don't, we don't want to even consider that. So we want the bids to be two-seventy or less, and we, we will try this CES process, because we don't want to go over the funding that we have available for the project.
Okay.
Yeah, so what we want to do is we want a motion for rejection of all these bids.
Right, do you want to add something?
Well, I was going to just say that the way we bid them, we were hoping to get too low bids, but it looks like the contractors thought, well, this is the low project, so I'm going to go high on this one, and this is a bigger project, and they went low. So you'll find out with the Washington Bridge, it's significantly lower, so, anyway.
Thank you, thank you, Donald. I'll make a motion that we reject this, uh,
Bit.
Second Street Channel Pedestrian Bridge Construction Award.
I second.
Uh, Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Pelle?
Yes.
And Counselor Gartan?
Yes.
Does this fit in with the award that we got, um, estate funding? Is that, is this amount below, or?
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is. Yeah, it's one-point-five million, right, Donald?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, we have one-point-five million, and that, that, that includes, uh, the CM portion for us, which was a hundred-and-fifty, so we're still below that funding amount.
Is that unusual?
Uh, to, well, it, it's, uh, it's, it's surprising to me to, to be under that much. It's usually tighter than that.
Compass Engineering, AUI Mobilization, they're, uh, hundred percent lower than the other days. Was it a hot con?
Uh, that, that's, uh, I, I'm not sure how.
They're like a hundred-and-twenty thousand?
They, they, I think they're actually in Milan right now. They're, they're doing, uh, I think they might be doing the Sand Street Bridge, and.
Oh, really? That's why?
And I think, I'm pretty sure that's why, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
That's the reason. Because when you see a bidder like that, I mean, you've got to question it.
Mm-hmm. No, that's, that's true.
It's, it's under budget, right, of, uh, the one-point-three?
By what, by three-hundred? By what, by three hundred?
Put that all into the other one, say it's.
Now, what, Laura, what happens to, that you said that he, there's one point five million already awarded to this project? The bid comes in at one, one million, one hundred and thirty-three, what happens to the rest of it?
Um, that money stays with the state. Do we have to do a match even if we, the bids are under? Do we have a required match? Do you guys remember?
The, the agreement's one point five and the city's match is seventy-five. And the seventy-five is, that's per any activity on the agreement, so it stays at seventy-five, even though they're. With, with construction management and this, we're at about thirteen-five, but there's always, I know he won't, he doesn't want to hear this, but there's a good possibility of a change, a change order or two, and that gives us some wiggle room for change orders. A lot of times, we don't have no, anyway, like the Jefferson project right now, I think we have like three thousand dollars in wiggle, we're on a two-point-five million dollar contract. So we, we don't want to get that tight again, there's been some headaches there. So in this one, we have some wiggle room, and I, I can almost guarantee, Donny don't want to hear this, but there will be a change order or two. Hopefully not big ones, but it's just.
And our match doesn't change, so.
Correct.
Is there a possibility of it going over, one point five?
Yes, oh, yeah, for change order.
We will, um, I mean, in, in the, in the event, do we see a two hundred thousand dollar change order, we can, we'll, we'll work with the contractor to, to make it work.
Okay.
Write it down.
I'll get that in writing, please.
Make it down.
Any other questions? Will you make the motion for approval?
I make a motion, we approve, uh, the bid from, uh, Compass Engineering and Construction.
I'll second.
I'll second. Okay, uh, Counsel Adarte?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
And Counsel Padilla?
Yes.
Okay, Washington Avenue Bridge, been voted and approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next to it, Resolution twenty sixteen seventy-nine. That's CDBG application.
City Manager, Council, uh, let's see, first of all, I have to thank you guys for taking the time out. Under Laura's instruction, we wanted to give you guys some more information, perhaps, in meetings on the projects. We don't, you guys probably don't feel comfortable making a million dollar decision in one night, I went also, so, anyway, thank you guys for taking time out of your day. Uh, better discussion, I think, at the meeting, which, which is good, so, anyway. Uh, before your Resolution twenty sixteen seventy-nine, we've been going through the process for CDBG application, CDBG Community Development Block Grant. Uh, it's involved several public hearings, choosing a project, that kind of thing. What made the most sense was, uh, Washington drainage, and really the big factor there was, uh, we've already started on Jefferson, so that just continues that, and there'll be a new Mesa View Elementary coming soon, so it just falls in line. So it, even though with the available funding, we can't do a long stretch, we're also applying for DOT funding or other options for, to continue, because there's a limitation for CDBG funding. Anyway, the max amount's seven fifty for a full project, uh, of which we're going for. So the resolution just basically, uh, displays the council, the city's commitment in the project, you're aware of it, uh, the scope, and the city's match of the, of the, of the overall cost. So in this case, it's, uh, seventy-five thousand or a slightly a little more with the full phase project. Uh, and actually, Brandon Howe, I believe, is on, on the phone of the Northwest New Mexico Cog for in case we have further discussion afterward. So anyway, um, the application is due June eleventh, this is one of the last steps. Uh, you guys showing your commitment, recognizing the amounts, recognizing the scope, recognizing the project, uh, your support. The, the, the numbers are there in front of you, the city's, uh, match on seventy-four, two sixty-four, or the, uh, seventy-five thousand. So anyway, the numbers are there. If this comes into fruition, say we're approved, the application due June eleventh will be notified in July or August, and we probably won't see actual construction next year. Well, I think we only have two years on the CDBG, so it'll be for sure next year. So anyway, your support would be appreciated, I stand for any questions.
Yeah, can you explain more of the Phase Two, um, drainage project that we're looking at here?
Yeah, so we're on Jefferson now. Uh, the Washington Bridge is getting done, and right there where it turns to Washington, there's a section that, where, where the turn is actually, that's about what, all that this funding will get done in regard to sidewalk, road, underground infrastructure, sewer, water, that, all that kind of stuff. I know it's not a long stretch, but that's why we're trying to tie in other available funding options such as DOT to go past that turning point. You, you know where that little arroyo is on the west side of the family center? This, this funding will only take us from the corner of where the bridge turns to Washington to that corner. Three hundred and fifty linear feet or four hundred.
Okay.
Linear feet, so it's not a big stretch.
Small portion.
But it's a, it's a piece of the pie, and you know, with projects, we.
Sure.
You know, we have to plan it.
That, that includes like sewer, water, it all?
Correct. All, and, and with CDBG, it has to be a, a, a complete project towards usable afterwards. So that's why we have to do everything in just that little stretch, because we can't just put CDBG funding to the water. You know, because you can't use it afterwards, because the road won't be done to the sewer. You have to, it has to be usable, so we have to complete that little area in order to qualify for the, for the spending. And from what I understand, the, the applications are, are, there's not very, very much this year, so, uh, there's a good chance that we get approved.
There's also a good chance that it'll come online before the new school is built there?
That, we're, that's what we're hoping for, because the Mesa View, I believe, was put on, I don't know, you guys may understand, uh, funding for new schools better than I do, maybe Laura does, but I think you get on a, like a top ten list or something like that, but anyway, Mesa View's up there, so they expect funding within like two, three years. But that, that's the funding, it sort of take a year or two to go to construction. So if things fall in line, say this project gets completed in two, three years, and soon afterwards, the school, or at that point, they should already be started. Started, but not, you know, too far.
So, so with finishing Jefferson, the, the bridge, the CBDG funding right there, does that take care of a lot of the drainage problems that residents there have been experiencing forever?
Huge, uh, that's Jefferson Street before, there was a drainage pipe about this big, going across the road in that big old channel, going through Ronnie Pine's property. Anyway, the drainage there now is like forty-eight inch drainage under the road, so it's really huge upgrade. And then we got the pond in addition, gathering water from another area. Uh, Donny could probably speak more to this than myself, he's the engineer, who's done all the work, but it, it's a huge improvement. And all these projects, with the way Grants is, they're, they're all drainage projects. I mean, we get a new road, we get lighting and sidewalk and all that, but really, they're drainage projects.
Yeah, because we don't have proper drainage around the whole city, so, uh.
If you look at that Jefferson Street, it's amazing how low it is, it's almost like the street almost acts like a channel.
It does.
You know, in the good rain. It probably does, it's probably designed to have.
Yeah, that's what it's there for.
Yeah.
While I make a motion that we approve this CBD Resolution twenty sixteen seventy-nine, CBDG grant application, so you can get the ball rolling on this one. And you second?
I second.
Counsel Padilla?
Yes.
Counsel Adarte?
Yes.
And Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, Don. I'm Christopher, right?
I do want to say real quickly, thank you to Donald, uh, this morning for taking some time, sitting down with, uh, Eric and I, and, you know, they didn't just ask all the dumbest questions we can ask, and filling us in, and we came a little bit more informed on, on these projects. Thank you, Donald.
He did.
Yeah?
He didn't sit down with me.
No?
Sat down with me. All right, next item, uh, cemetery price and increase discussion.
Okay, uh, excuse me, guys, uh, I had a, a lot of people calling me, that there's a lot of people coming from outside of the city to get buried here. And then, when I was, uh, before I became a city council, I was in the cemetery board, and I remember when we made that, that area right now, uh, what's that section right there in the middle?
In the middle?
Uh, right there, where.
I think it's.
D, D.
The D area, yeah.
It was supposed to be last for a long time, so we, I don't know where the money came from, I guess, from Grants and stuff like that. We extended it up to F, up on top of the hill, and that little green area coming down from Mesa, and then both sides. And we fenced it, we fenced all that area. It cost us four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for everything. And, uh, I don't know who the engineer was at the time, but there's a, quite a few flaws that we have seen. I don't know if you guys are worried, but it's going to take me a while to explain, but, uh, right now, we are burying people on Section F, right? Because of that areas all the way to the, to the apartments. And, uh, pretty soon, we're not going to have any, any real estate. So what I'm proposing, you guys got a copy of this, the Outok County resident pays twenty-four hundred dollars. I recommend we go up three thousand dollars for that one.
To twenty-eight, I understand?
The, 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 the Outok County resident, I'll, it's twenty-five hundred now.
Yeah.
We go up to three thousand.
Oh, three thousand, five, five hundred more?
Five hundred or three thousand dollars total, I'm sorry, Fred.
Oh, okay.
And leave the, like, the open and close standard plot, the same thing. The only thing that will change from the twenty-five will be three grand. And then I was talking to the Director Winters, he's the, he's the county commissioner, and he set it up in Bluewater, the Pioneer Cemetery there, they're charging a thousand dollars, and they're going fast, he said, that's what most of them are coming over here to. So, and the county does not help us at all, I don't think, with, uh, with our costs, that we have to pay Jacobs quite a bit of money for upkeep. And if you go out of town to, uh, some of his other cemeteries, they don't have four, we can look at that green grass and, uh, trees and penny bros and stuff like that.
Very well kept.
And we have to pay for it. So I would recommend as a civil county resident, from eight hundred to a thousand, will be two hundred dollars more for Outok County. We don't, the city stays the same for everything else.
And the Outok County residents from twenty-five.
Civil, civil county resident will be a thousand, and then, uh, Outok County, uh, Outok County resident, twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
No changes on the child?
No. I don't, unless you can recommend, I don't want.
Either one of the childs either?
Uh, yes, the adults. We're getting, uh, I had the list here, you gave it to me, oh, oh, here, I'm sorry. We had, uh, the, the clerk gave me eighteen plots sold to city residents the last six months, three plots to county residents, six plots to Outok County residents, you know, that's, 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 that's going to be three thousand dollars we have, you know? Because like, what I was taking into account was Jacobs, because we pay him quite a bit of money. Water, we take water, we have to, as a matter of fact, Laura, now on the subject, for the subject of that, they're going to have to manage it better on the, on the watering. They flood that sector once, you know, instead of monitoring the justice sprinklers or something.
Yeah, we talked with them this week, Mark put out a directive to, um, slow down the watering on all parks.
That's right. So our more frequently used parks, we're going to water twice a week for twenty minutes each water, and our less water, uh, used parks, once a week. And we're, we're, uh, mixing some parks like the East End Triangle, some that don't get any public use.
Yeah, because right now, they, they, they're going to sit for two o'clock in the morning or something like that, and they shut off at probably five or six o'clock, you go there at that time of day, and it's all flooding. You, you see what we do.
Let me ask you another question. Um, now that Outok County resident, three thousand dollars, now that's, that's for a, a, well, full burial, right, because isn't it different for someone that, that is cremated, they just get a smaller sections out there?
Yeah, right, they can get a, an urn block.
An urn block, okay.
An urn block. But most of these people buy a regular block just for their.
Are we, we're going to leave, we're not, we're not going to make any changes on that?
Unless you guys want to, I, I haven't thought about that, but.
Are we?
We have an urn, an urn section on the west side of the cemetery, you know where it's at.
And how much activity do we get there, do you know, Mark?
Very little.
Very little?
Right.
We have, we, they don't bury, they don't want to, they want a big one over here, you know? They, they can do it one time, they play, but they, they can bury one person in a plot, and then they can bury, let's say, a regular person in a casket, and they can put four urns on top. That's the, the rules right now. So, it's up to you guys.
Well, I agree with you, Fred, I think we should make, uh, those two changes. I make a, uh, I make a motion that we approve the Civil County Residence from eight hundred to a thousand, and the Outok County Residence from twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
I second.
Okay, Counsel Padilla?
Yes.
Counsel Adarte?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Those changes are been approved.
I figure it way.
Okay, next item, number ten, budget cuts.
Okay, so you should all have a sheet that looks like this, that I wrote some notes.
I'll now send it to you.
You have it? Okay, um, we're looking at budget cuts, um, probably this rest, the remainder of this fiscal year. In the month of March, our gross receipts was about half of what we typically bring in. It was down about two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so that's a big hit to this year's budget. We have implemented a hiring freeze and are not filling several vacant positions of people that have been retiring or that left. We have about, I would say, five positions that people vacated. And then we put a freeze on any purchasing, uh, items that could wait. So we're trying to encourage departments to hold off on things that could wait for, you know, a year or, or so. And then we're looking at possible furloughs across the board. Um, I was a little disappointed, though, in, in calculating, Kimberly helped us calculate what one day's furlough would be worth. And if every staff member that works for the city took one day's furlough, we would be saving twenty thousand dollars. So, um, that's not a big, a big change or a big help. And then for the next fiscal year, starting July one, we're, we're projecting a thirty percent reduction in revenue, at least starting out. We're hoping things are going to turn around soon. We would continue our hiring freeze, cut back on any projects like paving, lights, sidewalks, etc., that could wait. Um, I want to know, do you want to cut the fireworks show? We spend twenty thousand on fireworks. Uh, we're talking about possible furloughs if needed, possible layoffs. One position, um, that makes fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cents per hour would save approximately fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Then that's looking at a year's worth if we laid off. Funding for outside agencies beyond lodgers tax that are slated for reductions, so, um, I put down some outside groups that we fund, Main Street Economic Development, the Transit, Jacobs Contract. Um, most of those have been told their funding's going to be cut by thirty percent, um, even Jacobs. And so we're working with them to lower their scope, but, um, something we'll need to consider, you know, everything's really up in the air. We don't know how things are going to pan out. I'm hoping now that we're starting to open up, that things are going to turn around real quick. Um, Counselor Garcia is noting that many of the businesses are actually doing pretty good, the ones that have been able to stay open, their businesses increased. And I've heard that also. So we're, um, we're hoping April's GRT might not be quite as drastic as March, just because people got stimulus checks and because we may be having others coming in from outside of our county to shop. And I believe more locals are shopping local rather than going to Albuquerque. But, um, you know, a couple of things, do we want to mix the fireworks show? Uh, do we need to cut more? Uh, do we need to cut more from the outside funding that we do? And my recommendation's gonna be that we try to avoid layoffs. And I was on a, a call today with others across the state and that seems to be the, Senator Udall was on there and he was recommending that we try to avoid layoffs because layoffs are gonna cause further devastation. More people not working and then they're not able to, you know, spend money and, um, they'll start cutting back more. So if we could avoid laying people off, that would be great. But we're just kind of preparing that two hundred and seventy-five thousand just for March is really a big hit to our budget this year.
How many people you haven't filled positions since this has happened?
I would say there's about five positions. Um, Mark, Mark took the biggest hit, I think he had some that left. He had three, just one in the pipes, two on the street.
Five, five total in two months that we haven't filled. In just my area.
Yeah, in just your department.
Right.
So, how long can you be sustainable without the people compared to, you're saying that we're, let's say five people, that's fifty thousand a year. We're at second quarter, so you're looking at thirty-eight thousand times five, almost two hundred thousand dollars if you don't replace those people, but how long can you be sustainable with it?
Counselor, it depends on what kind of projects that those departments are, are slated to do, right? If you're expecting full, full-time paving projects, obviously that's not very realistic. As far as Laura and I have, have talked, if there is a reduction of scope from Jacobs, what could some of the departments pull together and under the umbrella of Public Works? I think we could pull, pull some areas off that and, and just try to consolidate. Sorry. We would consolidate as best as possible and it's, it's one of those things in a tough economic time, you, you just kind of have to evaluate what's important. So we cut back on watering, fully anticipating to have to cut the grass less, have to be on the grass less in response. And so there's some areas where we can't, obviously, uh, after next week, no more paving. So, yeah, I, I, I hope that answers your question. How, okay.
Now, is there room for like shifting, uh, workers from one area to another?
There is. Everyone's gonna have to wear at least a hat and a half. And so I've already addressed all my people and I imagine across the board, uh, there's gonna be some memos that are put out, that'll be Laura and, and, you know, tightening, tightening the belt, so to speak. Uh, maybe, uh, just for an example, someone from the streets department, they're gonna have to jump on a mower and, uh, jump on a weed ear and just, just to make things work for the time being, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do a lot of cross, cross work. Uh, Mark and I were talking, you know, what could we do with the pipe crew because we're trying to cut down on supplies. So, uh, right now he's got them started cleaning manholes and sewer lines, which is more manpower rather than materials. The street department, we're having them clean ditches and the alleys and paint curbs, which is not a high expense compared to paving. So we're looking at how can we utilize our current staff and with minimal materials.
So, if we don't replace these positions by the end of the year, if you don't replace these positions now, you're gonna be saving almost two hundred thousand, right? So furloughs, I mean, it's.
That's only as a last resort, right? Furloughs and layoffs?
Yes.
But we don't, you're just trying to inform us now or are you trying to approve a budget cut right now?
No, I'm, I'm just informing you, I think, I'd like to know the fireworks for sure. Um, I don't know what your opinion is. Do we want to blow up twenty thousand dollars in the air for fifteen minutes or?
What kind of attendance do we get on them?
We, we get a high attendance. Typically people were going out to the golf course, we were shooting fireworks off at the golf course and people went out there and there was a live band and our DJ and people parked in cars or some could watch from their homes. So, um, it is something highly watched. Um, I know I, in years past, I've thought we could combine with Sky City. Sky City has really a pretty spectacular, we paid twenty thousand, I bet theirs is fifty thousand, double or triple what ours is. And some people from Grants do go out there, but I don't know if we could encourage that or, you know, with, um, so many hotspots in our county and neighbors, you know, we may still not be doing mass gatherings anyway, but, um, it'll be getting close to time to sign a contract with the firework company. So I'm just kind of, I know the mayor is very pro fireworks and even when we've had fire restrictions, he's wanted fireworks, so I didn't know what, how the rest of you feel. Um, I don't know if we're gonna be, you know, we had to do a furlough or are people gonna be mad like, well, why are they paying for fireworks when we, we did it, you know, had to go a day without walking?
Well, I'm kind of inclined in, in keeping it because sometimes an event like that is something people look forward to and now that everybody's been locked up for, for the last couple of months and you give them something to kind of relieve a little bit of stress, you know, like going out to the golf course, um, you know, um, you know, it's, I think it's, it's beneficial for the, for the morale of the city, I think, in my opinion.
Yeah, it might be duly, you know, needed after so much, um, down that it's something, let's celebrate, you know, the fourth.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
A lot of favor of keeping it, so.
Okay, well, yeah, we can afford it, it's, um, let's keep it.
Okay, and what about, um, the outside agencies that we fund, are you good with trying to at least, um, I felt like they should at least take the same cut that our departments are taking, but, and then of course if, if things pick up and things are better, then we can reevaluate mid-year and say, hey, you know, we've got an abundance of dollars, let's, um.
Can we still do that?
We, we could, we can adjust our budget anytime during the year to accommodate our, our own departments or outside groups as well.
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
So that's what you recommend on this outside, on this issue?
Yes, that's pretty much a thirty percent cut, like our departments are taking.
What did Jacobs say?
Um, they, they were disappointed, but I think they probably anticipated that might be coming.
What does that work with the Jacobs, because they have a contract, so what do you cut that's?
So we'll have to sit with them and decide which components of the contract that they won't be doing in order to cut. It's close to five hundred thousand that's getting cut from theirs.
That's correct.
So that means the city picks up that end, right?
Exactly.
So that's where Mark was talking, it sounds like they're wanting to give us the parks part?
That's correct.
Would be the component they want to possibly turn over, so that might be, you know, our street crew or our pipe crew might have to help with watering and, you know, adjusting sprinklers or helping mow, those kind of things.
You, you saying that they want to give us the parks permanently?
I bet they do, but, um, yeah, but for now, for sure, yeah.
When is their whole contract done?
Um, I believe we have three more years, three to four more years.
Right, but there's a, there's a two-year break and that, that's up in July. And so whatever adjustments are going to be made by the council need to be made before the Ju- July first.
If there's a breach, if they breach something, they can break the contract.
Are the, um, the equipment for the parks, is that ours?
Correct, the city owns all that equipment.
Okay. That's good.
Any other thoughts on, or suggestions?
Do you have enough people for the, if we had to take away the parts, Mark?
The area of concern in, if I'm being honest, is the cemetery. Sometimes a cemetery requires a little more care than, than some of the other parks. If, if some of the edges aren't trimmed on a park side, I don't think there's that.
Pretty sure nobody there would complain.
Right. But, uh, the cemetery, yeah, if you bury someone in the wrong spot, could be bad.
Well, I'd like to see if we can do anything to, um, not go down the furlough or layoffs.
Sure, go it all the way.
So, I think these, these cuts are in line to help us do that.
Okay.
So do we need to approve this?
No.
It's just for information.
Just kind of information.
Okay. Any, uh, any comments?
Uh, comment, um, took the opportunity this morning to meet with Donald and, you know, I had mentioned to Laura, uh, a call back that, you know, I'm newly elected, you know, and Eric and, uh, so basically we're catching up on a lot of stuff that's been going on for timeframe and so, you know, I'd like to see something built into the agenda to where we could have like maybe big budget items that require a lot of discussion to be put in as a discussion item rather than action items, so that we could become better educated and informed. And so when we come to make a decision on, on a particular item, then we know, we know what we're talking about. You know, I was very appreciative of Donald this morning because, you know, he, he gave us a really good explanation of three budget items for tonight, which gave me a really good understanding of what, what we're talking about. And rather than, than us coming to the meeting and having to discuss that particular, particular item, and I'm not completely informed on it, but I'm, but we're having to be forced to make a decision. And if we're just a discussion item, then we know we can even think about it a little bit more and, um, and then make a decision as, for we're better informed, put it that way.
So I'll have Donald and Mark typically are the ones that have those big ticket items if you all will help me to make sure we, we plan it out far enough that we schedule a discussion first and then maybe the next meeting we could, uh, have a vote on it. If things are very time sensitive, you could do like you did this session, these two items tonight, I, I understood they were gonna be time sensitive so that we could get the construction going before winter. So, um, they took the time to meet with you ahead, but it'll be better if we have some kind of formal presentation during the meetings, uh, the meeting before we actually take a vote, so if you all will help us do that.
Work session?
Yes.
Are we, are we, are you still talking about having like, uh, uh, big ticket items as, as work, as work session material, but other items that are smaller items as action items?
Yes.
Combined in the same meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we could do both and if that doesn't work, then we could look at, you know, a different structuring where we have a formal work session always. Uh, but if we combine both, then we could probably, um, take care of both needs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eric, you got any?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, I have a couple. When we talked about no paving, is that including no speed humps or bumps? I've had a request for one.
The, the speed bumps are generally taken care of by the planning and zoning, but generally they cost about three thousand dollars. I, I wouldn't call that a big ticket item.
Yeah, well, um, it's probably something that can wait, but, you know, as things get better, but it was brought up to my attention.
And maybe they put it through the planning and zoning process and then it's, it's on the shelf ready to go.
Okay.
So the way it works is that, um, individuals that want to speed hum, get a petition from the planning and zoning and they get their neighbors to sign it and a certain percentage has to sign and then it goes before planning and zoning. And they look at the, the request and decide if it's a good idea. Sometimes they ask for a traffic study from our police department, but.
But with the speed bumps though, they're not the old speed bumps, because I know people on Facebook, they were like, oh, speed bumps, speed bumps, but these are better engineered speed bumps because you did one on Balsam, right?
That's right.
And that was pretty nice.
Yeah, and we just completed that for the council, uh, we filled in, because they, they build them like Legos, so you can build them in a couple different humps or, now we put it all the way across.
Okay. And the other item is, I notice we crossed out LED lighting, um, the solar and, you know, I get it as far as, you know, maybe not budgeting for those for maybe a few months. But is that, is something, as, as things get more improved in our economy and our community, is that something that we can revisit?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, there's some areas that definitely need to be relit in some of the streets and, you know, Mesa's one of them.
Right. How do you think those lights are turning out by the way, Counselor?
They seem to be working well.
Right. The foliage, uh, it was as advertised, I think.
No, no.
He said the, the leaves wouldn't really bother it. I don't think they have.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's all I have. So, anything else? I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Wait a second.
If I say aye.
Aye.
Let's go.
Aye, aye.
Everybody, thank you.